Good evening. We'd like to call the February 8th, I think it's 8th, Rutherford, 2022, Rutherford County School Board Work Session Order. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Ask everybody to join me in a moment of silence as you keep Mr. Estes in your, as we do a moment of silence this evening. He's not feeling well. Thank you. Members of the Board, are there any questions on the approval of the agenda? Any questions on the agenda? Okay, item five, approval of the consent agenda. Any questions there? Okay, seeing none, we are going to move Financial Matters, number 11, up to the first item as we have a guest who's going to be speaking with us.
We have online here is Ms. Cudaback. She is with the Cigna Health Plans that the county currently uses for, you know, we currently use Cigna for the plan administrator for the county plans. And Ms. Cudaback is going to give you some information about the option of a Medicare Advantage Plan for our BOE retirees. And Ms. Cudaback, you go ahead and if you'd want to, please do your presentation.
Sure. Thank you for your time. May I share my screen with the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, I host disabled participant screen sharing. It will not allow me to s-
You minimize that.
Oh, no.
You should be able to present now.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Everybody, is it showing up?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. All right. Thank you all. Thank you all for your time this evening. My name is Jen Cudaback, and I am with the Cigna Medicare team, and I am located in the Connecticut office. But I work, one of the markets that I am aligned very closely with is the Tennessee market. So I work with a handful of clients in both Greater Nashville as well as Memphis for Medicare solutions for retiree populations. So I appreciate your time this evening, and I know that I have a limited amount of time to speak, so I did not inundate you with a whole host of slides. I hope that I can walk you through the information and then take time for questions from the group. And let's make this interactive because I'm looking at my screen. I cannot see all of you in the room right now. So if there are questions, I'll pause at the end of each slide and just take any questions, and then at the end, we can have conversation as well. So I'm here to talk about Medicare Advantage PPO. So your Medicare retirees currently have the plan option to take an OAP in and out of network plan for the medical coverage. And then for the Part D pharmacy, that plan has been in place for a good number of years for your retirees. So that is a true Medicare drug plan. The plan your retirees have right now on the medical side is a coordination plan. So Medicare pays as primary and Cigna pays as secondary on behalf of you as the plan sponsor. The Medicare Advantage Plan operates a little bit differently. The Medicare Advantage Plan is an integrated benefit. So it is a Medicare, it's a Medicare medical plus pharmacy plan today. So the plan you currently have is not an integrated medical pharmacy plan. It's a, the medic, think of it as the medical plan is a separate standalone plan, and then the pharmacy is another separate plan. They do not speak or integrate with one another. So the advantage of the Medicare Advantage PPO is it allows the integration of the two plans to be available to your retirees. And through that integration, it can drive significant savings to you as the plan sponsor for your Medicare retirees for a number of reasons. The integration and the value of having medical and prescription drug and behavioral benefits all under one umbrella means that this plan offers clinical care, which is in the form of care management, utilization management, of which there is none of that on your current plan for your Medicare retirees. So as a Medicare Advantage carrier, Cigna is responsible for the claim payment. So there is no primary and secondary payer under Medicare Advantage Plan. There is only a primary payer. So Cigna takes on the claim risk for your retirees and is responsible for paying both the medical and the pharmacy claims on behalf of your Medicare beneficiaries. The plan itself is Part A and Part B and Part D, all under one plan. So think of it as, in today's world, your retirees have a Medicare red, white, and blue card, they have a medical card, and they have a Medicare Part D pharmacy card. So those three cards are what they take when they go to either a doctor or a pharmacy for care. Under a Medicare Advantage card, there's one, Medicare Advantage plan, there's one ID card that covers all medical and the pharmacy benefits under that one ID card, and that is the ID card that the individual takes to his or her provider and shows at the pharmacy. These plans can save significant amounts of money because of the fact that they have clinical programs aligned to them. It's, the plans are focused on wellness visits and well care for individuals. So individuals are highly encouraged to get an annual exam and a wellness check and then seek any other treatments that the doctor prescribes for the individual. And by doing that, the plan acts holistically and can talk and to, the medical and the pharmacy, you know, can speak to one another, if you will. And doctors can understand if their patients are adhering to their Medicare or their medical regimen. If they're not taking their medicine, pharmacies are alerted to those, what we call gaps in care for individuals. So overarching, it's that engagement with the retiree and the retiree caring for his or her health that can provide the savings driven by this plan. So for a PPO plan, from a network standpoint, the PPO plan has both in and out of network benefits. We have doctors that are in our Medicare Advantage PPO network, and there are doctors that are not in our PPO network but agree to see customers out of network. For individuals in this plan, the same, the cost share is the same regardless of whether or not they are seeing an in-network provider or an out-of-network provider. The out-of-network provider just bills Cigna directly for that cost. This is a little different than what individuals are used to seeing during their stint as an active employee and then as a retiree because most of us think about out-of-network benefits as paying a higher cost share. And that is not the case with the Medicare Advantage PPO plan for your plan. So I will, I will say that for those of you who hear and read about Medicare Advantage plans that are sold to individual buyers and consumers, those plans often have a leaner out-of-network benefit. But for our group or plan sponsor-based business, the out-of-network benefits are the same. I want to reiterate on this piece here, important for your retirees, that the plan that is being offered has the same pharmacy benefit and the same drug list that is currently being utilized by your Medicare retirees. Talking about the different aspects of the program, again, wellness is front and center for Medicare Advantage program. And the way to manage that is to engage the individual. So in the, in the existing plan today, Medicare as a primary payer doesn't have a lot of wellness visits and core, and care that can be managed. So this is a little bit different for an individual, and we'd like to think that, you know, it's a, it's a better, more robust program to offer to your retirees. So again, the focus is going to be on having an individual go to his or her annual wellness visit because that's the way to be able to identify any type of care that's needed, catch something on the early side. Detection is key for retirees, so that's an important aspect of this program. Part of the program incents retirees in the plan to go have their annual wellness visit by giving an individual a $50 gift card. And those gift cards are available to, right now, we have both Walmart and Amazon gift cards that individuals are eligible for once they've completed that annual visit. There are other incentives as well, as part of this program, to keep people, again, engaged in their health, going to the doctor to be able to seek the treatment that they need. So we're trying to avoid serious illness, hospitalization, allow people to manage their symptoms, and overarching is to improve the outcome and keep your retiree population healthy. And for those who need additional help, that's where we engage from a clinical standpoint with doctors and nurses from care management and disease management programs for, for your retiree base. There's also specialty pharmacy that's available. Your retirees have access to that specialty pharmacy today, and that specialty pharmacy comes along with different medication therapy programs to make sure that individuals are taking, you know, the right medication, the right dose at the right time. Talking about information and support, there are a lot of ways that we reach out to your retirees throughout the year, whether it be sending newsletters with articles and recipes and reminders. So that would be a reminder to get a flu vaccination, for example. We do send a letter to folks if they have not yet had a wellness exam to encourage them to do so. And those help to just kind of keep, you know, an individual, their health top of mind going forward and going throughout the plan year. When you look on the slide, at the bar chart on this slide here, it's important just to understand that on the left-hand side of this, under the Medicare 27 and a half percent, that is the percent of traditional Medicare, Part A and B, red, white, and blue Medicare cardholders that have an annual preventive exam. So you can see as you move along to the Medicare Advantage HMO, and then in the orange, the Medicare Advantage PPO, that jumps to 58% because, because of that engagement, because of the reminders to individuals to have their wellness exam completed, and honestly, to offer the incentive for individuals to do so, to have that exam drives that percentage up much higher. So, you know, that we feel as if that is just one of those engagement stats that shows from a Medicare Advantage PPO standpoint, people's willingness to take on and to participate in their care. The plan also has some additional, I'll call, they're on the slide, they're called extra benefits. I call them bells and whistles, but there are additional benefits that aren't in the traditional Medicare plans. So fitness benefits, so there's a silver and fit, silver and fitness benefit, so the gym memberships for individuals, for examples, to YMCA's. They still have access to all of the healthy rewards programs that they have today that they can be found on mycigna.com. There's a home-delivered meals program that's a nice to have for individuals who are coming out of the hospital where home-delivered meals are sent to them, they're already prepared, so that somebody who's recovering from an illness does not have to worry about, you know, eating their next meal. Any questions on this before I move on? Okay. All right. In and out of network. I know that there are going to be a number of questions, so I pulled this slide in to allow you all to see that, you know, in and out of network, rules of the road, if you will. So Cigna goes out to the market and builds out and has a Medicare Advantage PPO network of providers and hospitals. There are also providers that may, may not, we may not have asked them yet to join our network, so they're out of network. There are other providers who choose not to join our network but to see our customers on an out-of-network basis. And there's a small group of providers that are not in our network and do not want to see customers on an out-of-network basis. That we've run into few providers who fall into that last category, but I want to be transparent with you all and just say, Doug asked a question yesterday as to whether or not every single one of your providers that your Medicare retirees are seeking care from today are in our network, and my answer was no. And that's the honest answer. The Medicare Advantage network of providers is never going to be as large as the in-network provider list that you have through the OAP plan today. So we have several ways by which we deal with, well, deal with, communicate with out-of-network providers. So we have individuals who call in and say, my doctor's not in the network. I'm enrolled in the MAPD PPO plan, and I'd like to see, you know, I'd like to continue seeing my doctor. How can I see my doctor? So we send in information to individuals with, it's a, it's a letter that individuals can take to their provider that explains, you can see this individual on an out-of-network basis, you can bill Cigna, and Cigna will pay you 100% of Medicare allowed amount. So there's no, it's, there's no harm from a payment perspective to a provider to see somebody on an out-of-network basis. We have a provider liaison team that is at the ready to work with any retirees who call in, who need an outreach done to a provider to find out if the provider will accept the plan. Oftentimes, the provider just needs to be educated on the, on the payment terms to be able to see that individual on an out-of-network basis. So at this point in time, I have not seen the la, the latest match, but I will tell you, we are upwards of, over 60% of the doctors and the hospitals that individuals are seeing today are in our network because the majority of your population lives in and around the Greater Nashville area. We are constantly contracting with providers, and if Rutherford comes on board for the Medicare Advantage PPO plan, we will do another comb-through of the utilization data to identify any of those highly utilized key providers that your retirees are, are seeking treatments from, and do our best to get them in network, and if not, communicate with them to see individuals on an out-of-network benefit and, and accept the plan. I can give one example I shared yesterday around, an example of an out-of-network provider and a situation where a provider elected not to take the plan. And it was a customer who needed a diabetic retina exam, and they had been going to Tennessee retina. Obviously, the individual was discouraged to hear that the provider would not see them on an out-of-network basis and, and accept the plan and bill Cigna. After reaching out to our care management team, our care management team immediately hooked this individual up with Vanderbilt providers and was able to get an appointment for that individual, and the individual had a great experience with that provider. So those situations do happen. We do have resources in place to help manage that care for an individual that should run into a situation like that. But again, those are, those are not the examples that are coming up on a regular basis. We are finding that if the doctors are out of network, once they understand the plan, once they understand the payment to the provider and how to big bill Cigna, they're willing to see the individual on an out-of-network basis. And again, the out-of-network cost to your retiree is the exact same cost share that would be if they were to see an in-network provider. On this slide, just trying to show you the implementation of the PPO plan. So with any Medicare plan, and this happens with your Medicare Part D drug plan, there are communications that CMS, the Government Centers for Medicare Medicaid Services, requires that we share with retirees. So it's a little bit more of a comprehensive program around mailings and when mailings go out and to whom and so forth. But this is just to show you how we would implement the plan for the Medicare Advantage PPO. So there's a pre-enrollment mailing that would go out in advance of enrollment meetings. And, you know, we know that over the last two years, enrollment meetings have taken on a life of their own. We've had clients where we've had face-to-face meetings with. We've done Zoom meetings and WebEx meetings and recordings that individuals can call in and listen to and, and see a slide presentation. A lot of different ways and avenues we've been out there in the market to educate the retirees on the plan. And then also, there is a pre-enrollment support line that individuals can call into to ask any questions. And that's where an individual could also call in if he or she did not see a provider in our directory, calling into our provider team to find out if that provider may be in process of being contracted and not getting the directory, or if that provider needs an outreach call to ensure that that provider will see the individual on an out-of-network basis. So enrollment support and enrollment processing, typical process as you pass us enrollment today. Again, the ID card would be a little bit different. So for an individual in a Medicare Advantage PPO plan, their Medicare red, white, and blue card, it no longer becomes their card to have to show. They would not have a medical card for the OAP plan and the Part D card. They would just have one Medicare Advantage PPO card to show for both medical and pharmacy. Individuals then get a welcome enrollment kit, and that shares all different information about the plan, encourages the wellness visits, speaks to incentives, other mailings that people will receive during the year. And then obviously, as I mentioned earlier, you know, the program is all about engagement and having individuals engaged in their health so that they stay healthy and they, you know, for successful outcomes in their everyday life. From an access standpoint, mycigna.com is, is available for this product, so individuals have the ability to look up information on the plan and look at, I mean, I think one of the most important things people use, mycigna.com, is to look up on the pharmacy side, so to see is my medication covered, and then to also manage home delivery if they so choose home delivery over retail mail. And a whole slew of other programs, as I mentioned, wellness incentive, the meals, the fitness benefit. There's also a vision in the hearing benefit on this, and there's access to a 24-hour nurse line for Medicare retirees. From an, from a team standpoint, we would have a team on site to do enrollment meetings, if that is what you would choose to do. And those could be, you know, however we would like to set up and however you elected to set up to best educate your retirees. We found with two other clients, one in Memphis and one in Nashville, for, that went, became effective this past January 1st. We did kind of a mixed media. We did meetings with people who came and sat through a presentation and then had FAQs, and we talked through and took individual questions. We took down doctors' names to research for individuals. So it was a very hands-on enrollment process. We can also do the WebEx calls and Zoom calls as well. So it's just a matter of not knowing what next October, November will look like. We, we've kind of learned through the past two cycles how to do enrollment meetings in a whole bunch of different ways. So with that, that is the, that is the product piece of this. The next slide I have is on the financial side. So do you want me to just go through the financial piece quickly?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. Okay. So back in December, there was information shared on the savings that could be attributed to putting in a Medicare Advantage PPO plan in place of the OAP and the Part D drug plan. So this is data for the Board of Ed. And if regard, if it were government and Board of Ed together, the cost of, the premium cost of the Medicare Advantage Plan does not change. So in today's world, your total cost for your Medicare retiree individual is $606 on a month, on a monthly basis. So that equates to just over $7,000 on an annual basis in, in the cost. And that's the total cost for both the employer-sponsored premium as well as the retirees' cost share. Looking over onto the right side, the premium for the Medicare Advantage Medical and Pharmacy Plan is $204.75. So almost a third of the cost of today's plan. And again, a lot of that cost sharing is coming from that value add of the Medicare Advantage Plan having programs that integrated the medical and the pharmacy benefit, along with the utilization, care management, and disease management programs that help control costs. And overarching is the federal government, as Cigna is the risk taker here and is responsible for paying the full claim as the primary sole payer of the claim. The federal government reimburses us an amount per person to, to pay for those claims. So that is taken into consideration when this premium is derived. So if you look down at the savings, the savings on a monthly basis overall is $401.25. That, if you use, I used 500 Medicare individuals and eligibles on your plan. That it drives $2.4 million savings, and that savings is overarching. So that's including savings that, from individuals' contribution as well as Rutherford's contribution.
Mr. Young, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just curious. How long has this plan been on the market?
We put this plan on market in Tennessee in 2020. So in 2020, we offered it, Williamson County took the plan for 2020. In 2021, we, in Tennessee, we didn't have any 2022 Shelby County schools and Metro Nashville public schools. public schools. And then, obviously, we are in other markets as well.
We only have three groups in Tennessee that's on this plan?
At, in today's, yes. We have Medicare Advantage HMO clients in Tennessee that have been on our HMO plan back to when it was a Signa Health Spring Plan that had been on for years. But we, it was first the HMO and then the market entry for PPO was in 2020.
I'm one of the 477, the famous 477 of retirees. Let me make sure that I understand, I understand the Medicare Advantage Plan. Will the county be changing completely to the Medicare Advantage Plan? Or would they be keeping what they have and offering also the Medicare Advantage Plan?
Ms. Cutterback, did you hear that question?
I did. I was thinking that the, I'm sorry, I thought that somebody from Rutherford was going to answer. The proposal we have right now is that the Medicare Advantage PPO Plan would replace the current OAP and Part D pharmacy plan that's in place today, not be offered alongside. That's been the discussion thus far.
So you're telling me, I just want to make sure, that this would take the place of my insurance if I was with the county, still with the county? And they decided to use this plan?
If the county elects to offer the Medicare Advantage PPO Plan, yes, it would be a replacement plan to the current.
To the current plan. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Cutterback, could you, and it's like, follow up with Ms. Bratton's question. If the BOE decided to stay with the current insurance plan with the BOE retirees, the 477, and the county general put the county general retirees under the Medicare Advantage Plan, but the BOE would have the option to leave the BOE retirees under the current retirement plans, is that correct?
Yes, the BOE has the option to retain the current coverage of the OAP and the Part D plan currently in place for the 2023 plan year.
And at that point, it's a local option with, you know, staying with the county administrator, having the county as the contracted government, not the bill. We could continue to just remain if the county wanted to do that, just leave everything in place as it is now. From Signa's side, you see no problem with that?
No, right, there's no problem. Paul, yeah, Paul confirmed that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for the information this evening. We do appreciate it.
All right, thank you all for your time this evening.
Okay, we have, we'll do visitors, back to number seven, we'll do visitors on Thursday. We are at number eight.
All right, number eight deals with curriculum instruction, found on tab two. This is a modification of our calendar for the 2223 school year. This was based on feedback that we got across the district, and we were requesting a few modifications. First of all, we, years ago, we started adding four half-days within our calendar to do PLC. When I come on board, we cut it down to two, and what we're requesting now is to eliminate it altogether. Quite frankly, that was primarily done for PLC time. We do PLCs, quite frankly, almost every day. So that's not really a good way of using our time. So with that said, we also would act like to add three teacher administrative days during the school year, and you can look at the calendar where we've got those. Those are some of our stockpile days that we use, and it will be primarily for instructional purposes, whether it is going over a new, you know, a new curriculum that, or excuse me, the advancing curriculum that will be for the next quarter, or whether it be entering grades, whether it be working with other teachers and things of that nature, whether it would be PD. It could be all those things, but we've added those three in there. So as you can look at the calendar there, it's pretty self-explanatory in terms of what's taking place there. We did a few modifications today, which I think perhaps helped us a little bit better in terms of making sure that we are on track to getting where we want to be. Are there any questions on the calendar there?
I've got a question. If they're doing personal development or professional development, will those days be in, within the calendar, were they required to have those?
They are. If you'll look at that back sheet there, it kind of breaks it down for you. Mr. Whittington did that pretty good job with that. It breaks down what are in-service days, what are the administrative days, what are the discretionary days. We do have two abbreviated days. We always have that at the beginning of the school year and at the end of the school year, and then also the vacation days for the teachers and the days out of the calendar. And if you'll look down there, it gives you what a teacher work days look like for each month and the student and the cumulative count for both. Teachers own a 200-day contract, and students are to attend 180 days of instruction for a minimum of six and a half hours daily.
Does this take care of all of their in-service, or is there still that little six-hour?
One, one.
One day left, the six, one six-hour day left.
Right, one day left.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, next.
All right, number nine, we all know we have had some challenges with our internet service, and quite frankly, our state testing's coming up here soon. This will only be for high school testing this year. What we're requesting here is to, and this is not to supply any service, this is just a backup for us. We're requesting to use E&amp;A Services LLC to fully manage additional internet access with hosted firewall from March of 2022 to June of 22 for a monthly recurring price of $11,750. This monthly service includes circuit and in-site router, equipment maintenance, service monitoring, field support, and all required E&amp;A equipment. This request is in place to increase additional service to our main server for the upcoming spring state mandated online testing, and this will be funded through SIR 3.0 funds. Any questions on this?
This is not the Wi-Fi service that we have now.
It's not, we're not going outside the service we currently have. We're actually adding on to what we currently have.
We have AT&amp;T now?
We do.
Okay, and this is AT&amp;T?
No, this is E&amp;A. We're using them as a backup in order to help us in the event that we have issues with our service during the testing.
Is there a non-compete clause with the AT&amp;T?
This is not, we're not taking away from anything in the contract. We're only adding to, adding an additional, temporary additional to our, what we already currently have. And I think Mr. Reed has vetted it, and our staff attorney has vetted it and has no issue with it.
And it's going to be basically $50,000?
Oh, that, actually, it's the, the max is $47,000. But when we're talking about state testing, we've had numerous issues already this year with the internet going down in some of our schools. And we're talking about, this is, you know, there's no, there's no, you know, there's no mess up, we messed up, and we're not going to hold you accountable. That doesn't work. We're being held accountable, our teachers being held accountable. So we need to be prepared in the event that we do face this issue, and it's, quite frankly, it could happen.
And you said this is only for high school?
It is only high school this year.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, next item.
Okay, as you can see, the disciplinary hearing appeal, I think you've had that to look at, something you can review. And as we come back Thursday, we have three options, you have three options of the board. You can affirm the decision of the DHA, you can overturn the decision of the DHA, or you can grant a hearing before the board.
Thank you. And if any board members have any questions, we can talk to Ms. Ridley about it after the meeting. Okay, next item.
All right, these are policy changes, a new policy. Below the policy changes recommended by the policy committee on the first two readings. The first one is 1.400, school board meetings, added guidelines for posters and materials from visitors during the board meetings. This was sent back, and the committee further deliberations by the board. The board recommended poster be no larger than eight and a half by 11. Policy 1.404 is appeals and appearance before the board. There were some changes here, the visitor process and decorum requirements were in line and allowable, and unallowable restrictions as established by the Sixth Court Appeals. This was sent back for deliberation. Basically, what occurred here, there was a language in there about repetitive, that was removed. All that reads is if there is a organization or delegate organization that they choose one person to speak on the behalf. Policy 4.205, enrollment in advanced courses, this provides clarity to the enrollment, what are the guidelines and requirements to be in these courses. These courses, of course, will be honors, AP, IB, Cambridge, dual credit, dual enrollment, CLEP, and any courses that have industry certifications. Policy 5.602, staff time schedules, it changes language to state that the supervisor has the authority to have a use of compensatory time hours before overtime paid. And this is primarily all of our salary employees. Doug, is that correct? Okay, making sure. 6.411, student wellness, this adds language, the TCA 49-61021, to state the amount of time required for physical activity. It's broken down by elementary, the minimum is 130 minutes each week. Middle and high school, the minimum is 90. Of course, they get more than that. Any questions on these policies?
I want to, I know there's some legislation about meeting time. Representative Red called, so I don't know how that's going to fall out and how that will affect whatever our policy is. There is some pending legislation.
Meeting time for beginning of school or?
School board, school board meetings.
School board.
School board meetings.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right, and we skip down to number 12. Facilities, found on tab five.
Mr. Spurlock, there was new policies.
Okay, there was a new policy. I'm sorry about that. We got the policy 1.01021, student member of the board. It adds a student representative and a deputy student representative to the board.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay.
All right, next, the number 12, found on tab five. This is the Town of Smyrna's request for land use at John Coleman. The Town of Smyrna has requested the continued use of a small corner of the John Coleman school property. The property in question has been utilized and maintained by the town since the park was completed. At this time, they're requesting to provide a paved area for an additional pavilion parking. Engineering Construction reviewed this request and finds this request in order. I was talking to Mr. Lee today, and one of the things that I will say about that park and all the parks in Smyrna are they are outstanding parks. Would you agree, Mr. Lee?
Yes, sir. They've done a really nice job with the parks, and they really work well with us at John Coleman.
Very good, thank you.
It doesn't say specifically who's going to pay for that?
Pay for?
The pavement.
It's at no cost to us. This is all the city. The short version is they've been maintaining this piece of property ever since, we lease the property at John Coleman from the Corps of Engineers, and they lease the park property from the Corps of Engineers. Neither one of us is paying anything. And we recently found out that our boundaries are actually over on the park, a corner of the John Coleman property. It's beyond what we would deem usable, it's on the other side of our detention basin. But they've been using it and mowing it and maintaining it ever since, I don't know how long the park's been open, but a while.
And truthfully, they could go, they could get with the Corps of Engineer and go and have that amended to do that, but we're just doing it this way.
And it is going to follow the same MOU that we do for the, when they use our fields to, for practice parks and that sort of thing. It's just, it's just two governmental agencies, we have to have the paperwork to allow them to continue to use it.
Sure, thank you. Thank you.
All right, number two is the Buchanan Elementary Sewer Change Order. Jerrit Builders submitted a request for a change order number one in the amount of $106,843 for additional electrical services for the new sewer plant. Engineering Construction has reviewed the request in order, no additional funds are needed as the project still has enough funds in the light item. But, Mr. Lee, you might want to explain why we need this change order.
The existing sewer system at Buchanan, which is what we've been trying for three years to get changed out, is almost finished. We're, I don't know who's happier, maintenance, me or T-Deck, but we're all kind of excited. But the short version is the power that we had at the existing pump station is not adequate to work the new pumps that are going to be installed for this pump system. So typically, you would run all the electrical overhead, and we would have a nominal fee with Middle Tennessee Electric, but due to the property line and the proximity to some other things, we're not able to run the entire length overhead. So a lot of it is having to be done underground. So we've gone as far as we can with Middle Tennessee Electric overhead, and our contractor has to take it underground from there to the sewer plant, and this work covers the ditch, the pipe, the wire, so that we can get the adequate power that we need for the new pumps. We had funding available, we just did not have it allocated, and this allocates those funds to that change order.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do have a question.
Okay. Hold on.
I see some other supplies and stuff out at Buchanan Elementary. Are they going to be doing some more work on the school?
That is, that's all for the sewer, that's all their materials, yes, sir.
Sitting out front there.
Yes, sir, that's the materials for the sewer system, yes, sir.
I just wasn't sure if that was it.
That's it.
Thank you. Next is insurance. No other updates other than our speaker tonight. Thank you. 14 directors update.
Yeah, we got Mr. Evans and Dr. Anthony going to report out on some things that we
Thank you for allowing me to have time to talk with you tonight. I hope that you were at the same, we have a flyer that we're using for both our certified and our classified job fairs. So what we also have the opportunity to do is to place these at different locations. We've been meeting with Rotary Club for both Smyrna, and we're going to be attending at the Rose Road Rotary next month.
We have been working with United Way, we're going to be working and having flyer distributions at the garden show that's coming up this month as well. So we've got a lot of partnerships, but we're using this so that we can track our QR code and how many people are using that. As you see, we and the restaurants are facing the same issues that we're having for our custodial and our nutritionist positions. So you're able to hopefully gather and gain a few more employees that way, and we've also redesigned, I'll have Dan show you just a little bit how we redesigned our HR website to make that a little bit more user-friendly, maybe some terminology. We use Power School for the last 12 years, I guess you'd say, as our main. Power School for the last 12 years, I guess you'd say, as our main engine to be able to list your applications and those kind of items, but we've been working with Power School to use more friendly terms, and we'll show you that in just a moment, but I did want to mention that in addition to what we've always had, we have our own Twitter site, but we've always used our communication department to help us with Facebook and those kind of items, but we have our own Facebook account, and we've been pushing out information about our job fair and our jobs, as well as LinkedIn and Instagram, so I hope you've been able to check that out, also, in addition to coming up to the Verso Home Expo, we're looking at partnership with Verso VFP Magazine, we've been able to make connections with Workforce Essentials to list our jobs on the Hot Job, which is their listing site, and then they've been very gracious for those who are having trouble, maybe with creating a resume, or those kind of items, they have services through Workforce Essentials to help the employees to apply, kind of like Yates does for Nissan, which is really great. Also, like I said, Workforce Works, United Ways have been wonderful to help us out, we've been doing a lot of recruitment in Cannon County because of their consolidation of their schools, radio advertisements, newspaper, websites, those kind of things, and looking for areas where that if other districts are having the issue of not growing, which you don't have the issue, maybe there's some possibilities according to other people, and continuing, of course, usually about 10 job fairs within a month or six months period, both in-state and out-of-state, virtual job fairs, a lot of them are changing and having job fairs, not only for education now, but because of the need of classifieds becoming more prominent overall with jobs that we feel like we can, you know, maybe get some applicants in our classified positions, we are also working on doing a version of, sorry, doing a version of a yard sign, kind of like we do for our substitute program, where that we can place that in the school, you know, strategic location, so that people can use the QR code to sign up, and in just a month, you'll see how that, when they do the QR code, it goes straight to our application site, billboards, we're working with the district owned, trying to get maybe, maybe one or two of those down in the state 24, continuing to work with our education preparation partners that we've already been working with, and currently working this year for the first time with, in Boston, with the National School Psychologist Conference, a big recruitment push, because we know that need is there, and that's the biggest place to find school psychologists, all at one location, so many, many things are going on in our department, but I wanted James to kind of show you how we've redesigned, and for you to get a chance to kind of check that out, and some, you know, just hear a little feedback about what we've been working on.
So Dr. Anthony had asked me to work with her staff to, to launch some social media channels that are specifically for the HR department, I'm going to show you some of those in just a second, but before I show it to you, let me kind of give you the thought behind social media, so, Dr. Anthony and I laugh at this, but you can go to the gas pump right now in Kroger, and while you're pumping your gas, you can apply for a job on the little marquee, right, that they have a little sign, you can scan with your phone and get a shift, I think probably before you end up filling up your car, and that's the kind of stuff that we're competing with, we're a little different because we're obviously government, we're dealing with students, and so we have some more safeguards there, some more hoops we have to jump through, but we, we really worked together with the HR department the last couple of weeks to brainstorm some ways that we can remove some of those obstacles, to make it easier to apply for jobs and find jobs and figure out how to apply, those kinds of things, now, social media, what makes social media really interesting is that, social media, you don't have to go anywhere, if I post a job on a website, someone has to go to that website to see it, if I have it on a bulletin board, they have to go look at that bulletin board, but the great, the great thing about social media is that people are doing it at home, if it's like my house, I sit on one end of the couch, my wife sits on the other, and we both ignore each other, and we play on our phones, you guys never do that, right?
Never.
Of course not, kids don't do it either, we've got them reading books, make sure Ann Haley knows that, but when you're on Facebook and you're on Twitter or whatever, if there are ads or job postings there, it comes to them, they don't have to go anywhere, they can be scrolling and say, oh, Susan might want to know there's a job as a nutritionist in the cafeteria, or something like that, and so they can then send it to them, and the great thing about social media, it's kind of like the phone tree thing, the more branches you have, the more, the more influence you can reach, and all those kinds of things, so that's the thinking behind social media, so the HR department is now using, they've already been doing a great job with Twitter, they're now using Facebook and LinkedIn, and we're exploring Instagram, there's a couple obstacles with Instagram, but we're probably going to launch that too, and all of this is free at this point, but there are opportunities to pay for boosting certain ads, we don't want to necessarily pay for all of them, because that would get really expensive, and Doug would not be happy with us, but if there are certain hard-to-feel jobs that we really need to recruit, we can, and Doug, of course, encourages this, we can boost those ads, that's what it's called, and so we can actually target zip codes, we can, so if we want to advertise in Cannon County, or if we want to advertise in Memphis, or wherever, we can do that by targeting zip codes on Facebook or LinkedIn, paying for those things, and we actually can run those ads for a couple of weeks, or a month, or however long we want to do that, so, let me show you a few things, so first off, you've seen the flyer that Dr. Anthony was talking about, it's more than just a flyer, this has been repurposed for, in, for a variety of different formats, so we've got it on our website, of course, we've asked the high school, or the schools to all post this on their websites, and it all goes to the same place, which I'll show you in just a minute, and a better-designed HR page with better terminology, the yard signs that we're talking about, we're putting those in high-traffic areas on the schools, those will be here soon, so that when parents are waiting in line to drop off their kids, pick up their kids, they'll see the same thing, we're just trying to get exposure, we've been working with some different community groups over the past couple of weeks to spread these around, we went out to MTSU this week and moved some of these flyers around in the different buildings, the ROTC building, Mr. Spurlock suggested that, because we have a lot of military families who are moving here, and they may be looking for employment, so we're just, really, it's been really exciting to hear the HR team brainstorming, how can we compete against some of these other entities that have all this flexibility that we may not have, but we can look for some opportunities there, so, we have this slide as the main slide on our website, it's going to stay there for a while, but when you click on it now, if I were to ask someone who's not in the school system, what is a classified job, you may not know what that is, that's some jargon that we use internally, so one thing that we've done is, besides making this more graphical, is also describe exactly what the jobs are, so we've got educator jobs, and it gives some examples, leadership jobs, and support jobs, and when you click on any of these things, it's going to take you directly to the certified, so you didn't have to know that it was called certified, but if I'm, if I'm, if I have a teaching license and I want to get a job, I can click here, and it takes me directly to those job postings, and I can see those things.
You no longer have to log in and do all of that stuff?
Not initially, if you see the job posting, you have to do this now, you used to have to fill out an application online.
Okay, but to see the posting, you don't have to do that.
We're trying to, like I said, remove some of those obstacles and reduce the number of clicks that you have to get through, and when they're posting these things now on social media, they're doing the same thing, so if you go to Facebook, which I'll show you in a second, they may say, we have four English positions open, and here's the four schools, and when you click the link, it's going to take you to this page, so you can see all those certified openings, and find the one that maybe you're most interested in, the same thing happens when you, if you go to leadership jobs, so we have an assistant principal job open right now that we're advertising for, and then your support roles, and this is everything else, so you don't have to know that it's called classified, you just know that, hey, I could be a custodian, I'm a nurse, I'm a secretary, or like me, Doug and I, we're both classified, aren't we, Doug, nothing wrong with that, we're classified, but if we're interested in those kinds of jobs, we don't have a teaching license, we know this is where we can come to look for jobs, I also want to show you just example here, here is our, now, branding, which we're going to talk about in a minute, Mr. Spurlock wants me to talk about branding, but the simple thing to think of branding is making sure that we're using the same types of logos and imagery across all platforms, so you see this nice picture right here of a smiling teacher, when you go to Facebook, you're going to see that same teacher, smiling, working with kids, and when you scroll down, now, mine looks a little different, because I'm logged in as an administrator, so there's some things that I see that the public doesn't see, but you're going to see, there's our, there's our recruitment flyer, here's some of our job postings already, this is the CT teacher for Digital Arts at Blackman, here's the interim French teacher, it's Stewart's Creek, and when they click on these things, it's going to take them to that same job posting we were just talking about, if I go to LinkedIn, again, you're going to see that same imagery, so that everyone knows it's the same organization that we're talking about, no matter which platform they're on, and you're going to see those, this is our recruitment fair, there's a flyer for that, there are different job postings, here's School Counselor Week, those kinds of things, all posted here, they're all going to have similar messaging, but it's, no matter which platform you use, you're going to see the same type of thing, that's the branding that we're talking about with, with our HR department, and then as far as substitutes, because that's always a hot topic, is substitutes, on that same job page, when you scroll down a little further, you're going to see, this is our substitute flyer, and when you click on it now, it goes directly to, sometimes this takes a minute to open, but it goes directly to this page, which is our substitute application, and here's the really neat thing too, because a lot of people don't use desktops unless they're in an office setting, if you're on your phone, and you, this is what it looks like on a phone, this automatically resizes, this is the kind of thing they're going to see on their phone, it's still easy to use, our website's what's known as responsive, so it changes its size automatically when you're on, this is the phone view of this same page, and you see there's, they can find out how much they get paid for different positions, all by clicking these links, and all this information has been on our website, we're just trying to repackage it, make it easier to use, easier to find, any questions on that so far? We're going to be doing some more web renovations, and there's, we're looking at some different options, and maybe even an app in the future, and those kinds of things, but this kind of stuff that we're rebranding with the HR website, we've got some ideas for instruction, we have a meeting tomorrow for our EPP program, top of the list is that we're going to stop calling it the EPP program, because no one knows what EPP is, so we're going to call it what it is, and we'll, we'll have to wait for next Christmas for you guys to hear that, I don't want to ruin the surprise, and then, we're also working on with Dr. Chastain, who's our choice school coordinator, a new section of the website that will be about our choice program, so that people can find those information, find that information more easily as well, so those are the kinds of things that we've got coming, now, as far as branding goes, we've put together a committee, Mr. Spurlock asked me to do so, a variety of people, and Ms. Johnson, you're serving as the board rep, our first meeting is next Thursday, and we're going to start talking about some branding strategies, now, branding is simply, the simplest way to think of branding is, what are you known for, it's not what you want to be known for, it's what are you known for, and we're going to have to evaluate what we're known for, now, we've got some great things in this school district, we all know that, that we're known for, we've probably got some things, though, that we're not happy that we're known for too, and we're going to have to set up some strategic goals for how to make sure that we get from where we want to be to where we are to where we want to be, and that's what the first meeting is for next week. Did I summarize that okay, Mr. Spurlock?
You did, good job.
Okay. All right, any questions from the board for us?
I have no questions, but I do have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Anthony, thank you, we've had meetings, you've heard me, you have heard the concerns of this board, this is, I am so thankful that you, that you have done this, Mr. Evans, we walked in this evening, and I said, somebody's posting jobs, who's doing this, and he wouldn't tell us, so, thank you for keeping the secret, but remarkable, thank you so much for what you've done.
I do want to emphasize that her department, they have worked their tails off the past few weeks to come up with some new ideas, so that's why I really said it's been a team effort, the ladies in that department have really, we said, any ideas you have, we want to hear them, and we've, we've kind of worked through those things to put some of them in action.
Going out to the businesses after work and trying to see how they're posting their jobs, I guess they're going through the same kind of process, there we are, and the same growing pains as well.
One of your staff tonight said, business after hours with the chamber, trying to do some networking, and they've agreed to spread this flyer around, help us with those sorts of things.
I looked for a while there, we talked about, and I always ask you about this, how's it going, how's it going? How long does it take, once we find a candidate, that person?
To get them fingerprinted and all that, and get them back out there, is that fingerprinting, is it, is it going faster, or is it, we still having issues with Adinago?
Adinago still is a challenge, this week we've been fortunate, and so they haven't canceled any days, typically, it's one to two days a week, usually there's two employees at each side, and when one comes ill with COVID, it wipes out the whole group, and then they have a particular group of two that float back to different areas, for instance, sometimes it may be only open on Tuesdays and Thursdays in Telahoma or Manchester, we've found that the one in Smyrna has been very helpful, the one in Murfreesboro usually closed about two, sometimes three times, three days a week, but in our, in our appointments that we set them every 10 minutes, so you realize that we, we lose out on multiple for the day, and then trying to re-change that around, we went to Franklin on Thursday, so I'll give you an update of where the TBI is, you know, we've been communicating daily and weekly with the challenges that we've had with Adinago, which is the contract through TBI for fingerprinting, we were one of three that were chosen to get to be a pilot in November for the wrap-back program, which means that once you're fingerprinted, then you would not have to be fingerprinted again in five years, as the statute says, because if there was any kind of indications, we would automatically be alerted, so we were so excited getting to be on the forefront of that, and then they said Thursday that they've had technical difficulties, unfortunately, even in the TBI realm, and the programs that they thought that they could get to help us to roll that out, they cannot do that at this time, so, they're going through an RFP process right now, and hopefully we'll get a vendor that is able to have the software sustainability to help us to do that, because it's very costly, and Mr. Spurlock's been very wonderful every year to let me have the money to be able to continue with our fingerprinting every five years, and to keep that track, which is a beast in itself, in addition to our current employees, but with having, you know, issues with fingerprinting, but what we take them everywhere, we send them to Franklin to be fingerprinting, we've sent them to McMinnville, you know, anywhere that we, there's an opening, we get a list, and fortunately, you know, everybody wants to work, and so they go to these different locations, they may drive an hour, an hour and a half to get to the place, most of the time when they get there, it's open, but oftentimes they'll see a sign on the door, fortunately, and, and, you know, then we have to reschedule. Yes, and so we've asked them, and I think, I think this is what you're talking about, we've asked them if we could have our own machine, we thought that we had that underworks, and then the TBI said halt, we need to finish our RFP, and to see if we can meet everyone's needs, but we really do like the ideal of the wrap-back program, we think that will help us to save money down the road, and then keep accurate information, because there will be times within that five-year period that we may not know something unless it's disclosed, and in this case, we would get it instantly, so it even helps us to be more informed.
Thank you, I'm sorry that it didn't work out with the TBI.
Yes, yes, I hope it's better. Any questions or comments, members of the board?
Fantastic.
Great job. Very good.
Mr. Spurlock, I do appreciate all the hard work that you and Dr. Anthony and her team and Mr. Evans have done, it's, it's exciting to see what the outcomes of that will be.
I got a couple of things on, on, the first thing I will talk about, there was a conversation that was leaked, I guess it was out on YouTube, in terms of Commissioner Schwinn talking about the new funding formula, and I think the, in the context that was talked about was outsourcing fine arts, and in some of the liberal arts teachers, that's not going to happen unless the rural counties want that to happen for them, you got to understand that a lot of our rural counties have never funded that fully, you know, you'd be surprised how blessed we are here in Rutherford County to have those programs, not only have them, but strong programs that are being funded, but that was, that was for basically, what they were doing is, if, if the, if the funding goes, and it comes to that area for, you know, they, they understand that probably, they're not going to be able to find art teachers like we do, so there was, so teachers, don't worry, no one's outsourcing, I know I got a call by a state representative, and, and, you know, I didn't know what he was talking about until I went back and listened to it again, and, and that's what it was, the second thing is, I know we, when we have our work sessions, you're asking great questions, and you're working, if it would be anyone have an issue, for some of my staff do not have to be here on Thursdays, following, you know, some will have to be here, and some, if they want to choose to be here, Doug, for example, he was almost asleep on Saturday a couple of weeks ago, so, if I could have that autonomy to determine, and you can tell me, hey, I need to have so-and-so back, that would help in terms of them being able to, you know, just to sit there and play Clash of Clans, I think I saw Sullivan and Boldry both doing that, but anyway, if you could give me that autonomy to do that, I'd appreciate it.
I think that would be, we find any board members?
I think that would be great.
Yes, absolutely. We do appreciate them being here, and we like seeing you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, anything else, Mr. Spurlock?
Good.
That's good, okay, Ms. Maxwell, do you have anything?
Nope, but I'll have something for Thursday.
For the federal as well? Perfect, general discussion, any comments, members of the board?
I do have something I want to, and I realize it's probably too late to put it on the agenda, but I'd like to put this on our radar to tackle ASAP, and that is a step-up raise for our EAs, we, I feel like they really, really need it, and I've gotten some calls and some emails, and I'm afraid we're going to have a mass exodus, and they will not come back next year if we don't do something quite quickly, so I would like to see us tackle that, give them a step-up raise, and maybe, I've heard also, at least one more payday, I, I really will think we need to do that, we owe them that, we've, we've tried to address, you know, the nutritionists, we've tried to address our teachers, and I think it's time to teachers, and I think it's time to, to let them know that we really do care and that they've been doing a great job holding down the fort through all of this. I mean, they don't stay in the classroom that they're supposed to be in half the time because they've got to go cover another classroom, and, and they've really helped with the subs because we all know the reason that, you know, if there's not a sub there, then well, let's move an EA. So I, I feel their pain, and I just, I told them, we need to do something about this. So I'd like to see us address this and possibly put this in the agenda.
And I agree with you, Ms. Maxwell. I consider those EAs part of our instructional staff at those schools, and we need to be looking at doing something to, to keep them, whatever it is we need to do. We've kept our, our nutritionist and, and we've helped our custodians and our bus drivers are happy, so let's see what we can do about helping part of those instructional staff EAs.
Is there a?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there a, is there offered somewhere a salary survey through the Tennessee Board, School Board Association?
Yes.
Do we have salary surveys for what other places pay, or, I know that used to work, I don't know if it works anymore, but.
Doug, you got a good reflection, because we did this not too long ago.
Dr. Anthony, I would love to.
One of the surveys that comes out usually in September is from the Tennessee Education Association. They survey each of the states, and we have to submit our pay salaries, and then Doug's department gets a report back that shows that comparison among all the districts.
TSBA has a new dashboard that compares all salaries in the state of Tennessee on, from custodians on up. So you can go on TSBA dashboard.
Those guidelines are a good place to start.
Yeah.
There's good data to have.
Any reflections on what you saw?
Hourly, a lot of our classified hourly positions, we're, we beat Williamson County. And I mean, it, it's a, so we, we, we're not, I mean, it's like what we discussed with the nutrition staff, we're not going to beat some of these for-profits. What we're trying to do is say, okay, we're, we can give you some quality of life, you know, you're going to be home in the evening time, you're not working weekends. And I know that that's talking to nutritionists, but as far as an EA, my point is, you know, we, we looked at, okay, how are we compared to other districts with EAs? We're not going to be able to beat Amazon, but once again, that's a different type of job. Like I said, we're, we're right up there with Williamson County with those classified hourly pay.
They're pretty stressed, they're pretty stressed.
I, I'm not, and I'm not downplaying that, I'm just saying is, it's a, and.
I'd like to see us do better than Williamson County, and do better than Wilson County, and keep the ones we've got. I'm worried about them going, just leaving education and going and doing something, because they can, they can make sixteen, seventeen, eighteen dollars an hour starting, you know? And we have EAs that have been there many, many years, 20 years, and they're making seventeen something an hour. And that's just, I don't think that's acceptable, and I, I really feel like we need to keep these guys. I have one other question I want to ask about you. I received a call from someone about the new way we clock in, that we're moving away from not using phones, that you have to use the computer at the school and the Wi-Fi, and it says two finger, and they take your picture? Is that correct?
No, that's inaccurate. It's a, it is, we've got, we have, we're going, we're moving to time, to an electronic time clock instead of phone because, one, I mean, it's, it's, the, the schools, there are several schools already using just nothing but time clocks. We left that up to the principals, and what we saw was the schools that use time clocks, which most, everyone, you know, that would be listening to this, you know, know that's, that's pretty standard and, you know, with you do electronic time, keeping you have a time clock. And what we've seen is these schools that already have electronic time clocks, they have a lot, I mean, a significant less exceptions that their timekeepers are having to go through to, you know, people forgetting to clock in, people thinking they're clocking in and they're not. So we allowed the principals and the supervisors to have a choice, they could have a biometric fingerprint time clock, or they could use a standard punch, and we, we allowed them to choose that at each school.
Some of them do, did choose the biometric.
Oh, yes, ma'am. And, and the ones that didn't use a biometric, we have that, we had it situated under a, a camera. So once again, we're dealing with tax money and our largest expenditure is payroll. So, you know, we're going to make sure we put good internal controls over, over our largest line items, you know, tax money. Now that's saying, if, the other thing, it guards the employee because we have seen, we've discussed this, is we actually see employees with comp time that in the past didn't have comp time. We're going to make sure that if you work, you get paid, you know, for when you're here. So it protects our employees.
When, I mean, other than, you know, trying to be a good stewardship of our, our money, but were there other issues that precipitated us going to time clock? I mean, I think you and I had this long discussion, and you might want to expand on that.
It was, we were basically the last part of the county to government to go to this. Most, pretty much all the larger districts around us have been on electronic timekeeping for years. Once again, it, with, with, on the, on the financial side of it, it's obvious, and on the internal control side, it's obvious. It also cuts way down on the cost of processing payroll. I mean, we, we were literally doing 2,000 timesheets every two weeks, and to process that, you know, it was getting to the point where we were going to have to hire some more payroll clerks, and they're not out there. I mean, we, we, just like we were talking about, you know, staff for the schools for the classrooms, it's the same on the administrative side. I mean, we, it, the people aren't there, and if I can, if we can utilize technology that's commonplace in other school systems, not just for-profit and non-profit, but in school systems our size, I mean, I'd, I'd rather do that than try to hire people that just aren't there. So it was, there was numerous reasons, but once again, it's, it's not new technology. We're, we're just going basically where other systems our size were 10 years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Could I go back to the EAs just for a minute? Thank you. I've got several, well, a couple of EAs that I know, and they've been with the systems probably two decades, and they are making less than $20 an hour. I would like to see some type of professional development for our EAs. I don't know if that happens. If they're staying with our system that long, we need to be sowing into them so they will stay, and the more skills and everything that they have, we, we can promote them and they can make more money. We need to give them the opportunity to make more money.
You mean paid professional development?
Yes, yes, ma'am, absolutely, yes. I'm not asking anybody to do any classes.
You mean attending professional development and being paid for that.
Absolutely.
We currently with, when we have a PD day, and Dr. Sullivan is, they, they helped arrange this a while back, is the EAs, we actually budget right now for when the teachers have a, have a PD day, and we allow our EAs to stay after the students. If it was a half-day PD, we allow the EAs to stay for that rest of the day if they have professional development for them, even though the children are not there. We, we actually have that currently in the budget. Now, we could get some expansion of that, but we're, we're trying to get EAs and instructions done.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to grow our own, we should absolutely include the EAs because they have a foundation of knowledge for years, you know, that they have, and we need to try to keep them too.
That would make us more attractive than even Williamson County and some others, because if we are in line with what they are, or even a little bit better, that's still not in my eyes. I mean, I would think Williamson County could do better too. I mean, I just, I feel like we need to reward them for their years of service. If they've been here and they're learning, because I was, just in the small time that I was there, I did some courses, I, I, I got some training, I improved on the skills that I had when I came in, and we want to keep them, and I want, I want them to stay with us for 20 years. Obviously, if you're at the same school for 20 years, you really like your job, and those are the people that I don't want walking out the door. So if we could do something like that.
I think what we can do, we can, I know no one likes to hear this, put a committee together to go over it, but I'm not, I've been flipping about it. A lot of what we have now is a mixture. You have a lot of young people coming into the EA position, and they're staying for a while and they're leaving. Now, I do think there's something to building back into those that have been with us and perhaps maybe offering them some additional training and things of that nature, and that's something, that could be a starting point there. I do think there, that we have to build the capacity in our EAs, and we know that we need our EAs, but we've got to build the capacity for them to see this as, as a way of progressing along.
Yeah, there's some type of career path there for them, because if they're going to stay for 20 years, goodness sakes.
That is a career.
Yeah, that's a career.
Wonderful. I appreciate your comments, and I, I agree with you, Ms. Maxwell, Ms. Sharp. A committee would be great, if you could help put that together, that'd be awesome. Any other questions or comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, thank you to all the staff for being here, we appreciate you sharing your evening with us. Mr. Boater for putting together Signo for presenting, and again, Dr. Anthony, thank you for all your hard work and your team in HR.
Appreciate you.
We're adjourned.